I'm going to call this committee to hold order. We have three items on the agenda. We are going to start with the hotel motel tax. I'm not sure who here from staff is. Is that you, Cliff?
That's me, Mr. President. Thank you. I thought we would spend the time this evening to talk a little bit about hotel motel tax. I know that councils had questions about what we're doing currently with the funds and how the process works. And I wanted to spend a few minutes and just go through this in terms of spending our time as economic development presentation this evening. So, we're just kicking off a new process for the distribution of our lodging tax monies. And council may recall that there was a change in the legislation in about 2013 that changed the rules and regulations around the use of lodging tax monies. And so, go through a little bit of background here. You know, what is the lodging tax? And obviously, this is, what we're talking about this evening is Renton's portion of the special sales tax that's collected from folks using hotels, motels, and private campgrounds, primarily. In Renton, we have just over a thousand hotel rooms that participate in the tax right now. As you know, we've got about 600 new rooms under construction right now that will come on in 2017 timeframe, so.
Excuse me, Cliff?
Yes, sir.
Can you say we have 600 participating? Are there rooms at our hotels that aren't participating?
No. Primarily of that thousand plus, we have about 800 of those are national branded hotels. The other 200 are smaller, independent operations. Technically, if we go back, you know, rooming houses, private campgrounds, you know, probably technically Airbnb kind of stuff should participate in this. I'm not sure how much of that does. Registered within our system, we have just over a thousand.
But all the hotels in the city, hotel motels-
Absolutely.
Are participating?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And the rate is 1% of each room?
It's 2%.
Oh, it's 2%?
Mm-hmm.
Well, Ewan's telling you it's 1%.
It's 2%. And then we get half, is that correct?
We get 1%.
We get 1%, okay. And so, under the new guidelines, this is how the monies can be used. Really, the guiding principle for the use of the monies is that it needs to be used for activities, operations, and expenditures that are designed to increase tourism. So, that can be tourism marketing. It could be the marketing operation and operation of special events and festivals that are primarily designed to attract tourists. So, that's a little different than just kind of the community festival that we might have something, you know, to celebrate here locally. Really, the focus of the monies is, so really, to try to attract visitors from outside of the area. It can also be used for monies, operations, and capital expenditures of tourism-related facilities that are owned by a city or a public facilities district. So, if the city wanted to operate a convention center or a visitor center, that kind of thing, we could use capital money and monies from the lodging tax for operations as well. For nonprofits, we can pay for the operations only. So, it's key that one of the changes that happened in 2013 is that there's no capital expenditures for tourism-related facilities outside of a city or a public entity. So, for example, if the Chamber of Commerce today wanted to build a new visitor center, we could not use monies from this fund for the capital. Still can use monies for the operation, just not for the capital. So, kind of some of the things that are included in the law as to what tourism promotion is, advertising, publicizing, or distributing information, so we can create videos, and we can create brochures, and we can place ads, if they're designed to help promote the industry and attract tourists. We can use some of the funds to help develop new strategies to expand tourism to our community. And we can use monies for operating tourism promotion agencies, like the monies that are spent to support the visitor center efforts at the chamber. And then finally, funding the marketing or operation of special events or festivals that bring people in to the community. So, all cities of at least 5,000 population are required to form a lodging tax advisory committee. And we've had a committee in the city of Renton for a number of years, and it's chaired by Councilmember Palmer. Also on that committee, we have representatives from the Marriott Hotels here, Hilton Hotels. Brent Cammon represents the Renton Chamber of Commerce on the committee. And then, Preeti represents the city of Renton on that committee as well. So, who can apply for funds under the lodging tax program? Convention and Visitors Bureau, destination marketing organizations, nonprofits, including Main Streets, Lodging Association or Chambers, and then municipal entities like cities or counties. But the deal is, for cities or counties, we have to go through the same process that all the other applicants do for the use of the funds under the new regulation. And what's key here to remember is that in our process, we'll only consider proposals from public and nonprofit agencies. So, a for-profit company can't come, or an individual can't come and request funds for an event. It has to go through a nonprofit or public entity. So, with that- I can- Sure, please.
Thank you.
We developed a new application for this year. So, this application was approved by our lodging tax advisory committee. And I'd just kind of like to walk through it with you a little bit, so you understand the process of how these funds will be distributed this year. Essentially, the first page is just information about the applicant and what the project is going to be. And we make them go through a cover sheet here with a checklist to make sure, number one, that their events, that they know what kind of events can be funded, and that they are an eligible applicant. And then they certify that they are eligible to receive the funds, and that they understand that this is a reimbursement process, and that they're going to have to report back to the committee on the results of their activities. Because part of the new legislation requires us as a city to report to the state how the monies are spent each year. And so, we developed a series of questions to go through with each of the applicants. Some of them are pretty straightforward, describe your activity. But the second question that we make the applicants go through is really based on what the state's reporting requirements are all about. So, the folks who want to take advantage of this need to estimate the attendance at their event, and how many are going to come from over 50 miles away. And of the people who are coming from out of town, how many are going to be staying in overnight paid accommodations here? And then we just have a little estimate that basically says, okay, we think it's going to create 25 room nights, and at just an average rate of $100, what does that mean for lodging impact for the community?
Oh, Cliff?
Yes, sir.
Um, I understand it's just an estimate, but so, there's no implications if they miss their mark?
No. Other than, the committee will obviously review that every year and take that into account on their funding decisions and recommendation to council. So, if somebody were to come to the committee and ask for funds to promote an event, and they did not do what they said they would do in there, then I'm sure the committee would weigh that in their decisions, future funding. But really, it's a reimbursement process, and so, we just ask that the folks estimate it on the front end, and then actually do some sort of a process to count their attendees while the event's going on, and report that back to us.
Councilmember Voney.
So, how would they track whether or not people stayed in the hotel rooms?
Yeah. They're just required to estimate. And one of the things that a number of the groups have done or can do is surveys of the folks who participate. And that can be as simple as just asking the folks for their ZIP code, so they, we get an idea of where they live, and how far away, you know, we can estimate that, and then just estimate lodging. Some of the other larger folks actually have the ability to get that payment data from their credit card transactions, and they can find that out. The other thing, and probably the most practical, is to work with the lodging folks here in the community. For example, if you were doing an event, you may want to work with the local hotels to offer a promotional rate. And then, after the event, you can ask how many folks took advantage of that. It's pretty, it's pretty simple. It's, you know, some of the reporting requirements that the state put on, they seem pretty onerous and hard to track, but we just want it to be as easy as possible, but still, you know, respect the intent of the legislation and know as much as we can about where folks came from.
Councilmember Person.
So, the way you're describing this, if I can put it into context, is so, if there's a nonprofit group that wants to have their annual meeting or convention or something here, they could apply because we'd want them to bring people from out of town to stay in our hotels, and that's kind of generally what we're trying to promote?
Exactly. Councilmember, we've funded a lot of kind of community events and festival kind of things like this, but the monies can actually go, you know, here's a great example. I know that RTC hosts a national conference every year that brings people into the community from all over the country. And they stay in Renton hotels, and they, you know, dine downtown and spend money when they're here. Those are the kind of things that maybe we haven't, under the old process, funded in the past, but are eligible. And those are the kind of things that could come forward for funding in the new process.
And-
Councilmember Corbin.
Yeah. And the funding, would it be for promotion specifically?
Yeah. Primarily, it needs to fall within the category, so it needs to be on an example like that. That would be for promotion and that kind of thing. It can be for the operation of events, that's allowed.
Okay.
But it's primarily for marketing and promotion.
Like the return to Renton Car Show, or whatever, could use this money to advertise, maybe more broadly?
Yes.
Things like that?
Yep.
Okay.
Just following up on that. So, this, did I cut some-
No, you're fine.
No, 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 you're fine.
No, you're fine. I was just acknowledging that someone else had a question after.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
So, like, using the RTC, so they could use this money, say, to have a shuttle bus run from all the hotels up to their convention, you know, which would make it attractive for people to then want to come downtown and stay here in Renton?
Exactly. Or, Councilmember Person, we could, you know, just as, you know, take that example even further, they could package events with restaurants downtown and shuttle people back and forth, or with other tourism-related activities, maybe, you know, they, I don't know, take them-
Take them to the Seahawks.
Take them to the Seahawks, yeah. Take them to see V Mac, for sure, those kind of things.
Councilman Perez.
I'm sorry, but I'm confused. At the beginning of your presentation, you say that the city, if the city wants to operate its own visitor center, and then you mentioned something that if the Chamber of Commerce wants to apply for money for their visitor center, can you clarify that for me, please?
Yes. Councilmember Perez, the thing to remember on here now is that if the city wanted to build a new center, those activities are eligible for the city to do that, but a nonprofit like the Chamber of Commerce could not apply for monies, capital monies, to build a new project. Somebody like the Chamber of Commerce or another nonprofit could operate a visitor center, and those funds would be eligible. But under the new regulations, none of the new monies could be used to build any kind of capital project for a nonprofit.
Thank you.
I'll just continue here through really quickly, and then stand for any more questions that you might have. Again, we just ask a series of questions, and make sure that they're working together with us at the city, that they have a business license, that they are working with our community services team on the special events for the process. This year, we just released the application. Applications are due November 20th this year. And here's the general timeline that the process will follow this year. In future years, the committee has talked about seeing if we could move this up earlier in the year, so that the application process may be in the summer, and decisions would be made in the fall. This year, applications are going to be due here in November. The lodging tax advisory committee will get back together with the applicants in early December, and the applicants will actually make a presentation to the committee about their event, or their, what they would like to have funded. And then, the committee will make recommendations, and we're trying to get their recommendations before council for your, by your second meeting in January. So, are there any other questions on lodging tax tonight?
Any other questions from council?
All right.
Thank you.
No, I got some.
Oh, you do?
You know me.
Go ahead, Tom.
About how much money a year in lodging tax dollars do we accrue?
Somewhere in the neighborhood of around $250,000 to $275,000. I think we're budgeted for $265,000, I think, is Ewan's estimate for this coming year, somewhere in that neighborhood. Again, as rates go up and our rooms increase, that will definitely change in the future.
I guess, oh, go ahead.
I do have one other question. So, with the new rules, any of the things that we funded last year, will they be outside of the parameter of the rules? Or, pretty much everything we've been funding in the previous years will fall within the new guidelines?
Yeah. That's a great question. I think long ago, in years past, before the legislation changed, the city obviously had a lot more flexibility in what could be funded with the dollars, and used more of those dollars on, you know, the general community marketing efforts and some local events and festivals that probably didn't fall under the same definition of attracting people from, you know, 50 miles away. Under the, this year's process, the one that we're currently in, each of the applicants that we've funded, we have put the language in the contract about the reporting requirements, and talked to them ahead of time. So, everybody that was funded with the 2015 monies understands their reporting requirement and how the dollars can be spent, and then moving forward, it's built into the application.
Go ahead, Councilman Perez.
Sorry. Are they going to have to report to us the results? I mean, to be, are we going to, is going to be a way to measure the success of this, to be able to reapply?
Yes. So, the questions that are in the application on supplemental number two, those questions are essentially, we asked them to estimate it on the front end, what they think they're going to do. That's basically what they're going to have to report back to us after their event is finished, and said, you know, we actually counted, we had, you know, 750 attendees, and we asked them for their ZIP codes, and so many of them came from outside of our area, and we estimate this is how many stayed in the local hotel. So, we will ask them to report back.
Yeah. Redirect my question to, is there a way to measure their success?
That's a, that's a difficult question. In terms of the general economic impact, we can make estimates on if we know that they are staying at our local lodging properties, or if it's a multi-day event, where we can estimate that while the visitors are here in town, each of them is spending, you know, a given amount of money. We have access to some research that can help us estimate that kind of thing. But, you know, a lot of, you know, like the Oktoberfest, or things like that, that are local events, but do attract folks from outside, it's tough to, you know, to put an economic impact on everything that's been funded.
Councilman Perez.
I guess, I really like this approach, and I'm excited, because I think we're going to, where we're going is to get people to come and stay in hotels and learn more about Renton, because as we get people to come here, we hope they come back, or they have family here that... So, how are we going to get the word out to, like, the RTC, or different nonprofits that may be wanting to hold a convention, or some kind of a seminar, that would attract people from around the country, the Renton?
Well, that's a great question, and since this is a new process, I think it's going to build as we go. This year, we did a press release when the new application was put out. We held a workshop last Friday for interested applicants to come and just learn more. It wasn't a mandatory thing as part of the checklist to apply, but it was informational, so we had a number of entities, some that we hadn't funded in the past, come and learn more. So, I think as it builds, and we continue to publicize this, we may get interest from a lot more organizations in the community than we've dealt with in the past.
And could we get a report from where we spent all our money in 2015? You know, I think you got to spend $265,000, and there's a man that I'd love that's prepared. He must have known I was going to ask the question.
This, Councilmember Person, is our, kind of a joint report on the lodging tax monies and the Renton community marketing campaign. And I'm happy to answer detailed questions. It's, there's a lot of information in here, but I'm happy to answer detailed questions now, or offline as you choose.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
Yeah, just a comment or an idea, maybe you've already considered it, but it would be nice to have, I really like this, first of all. I was thinking it'd be really nice to have a brochure that people that are managing venues in our town, like the IKEA Performing Arts Center and the Pavilion, could give to people that are maybe inquiring about renting it, and, you know, show how, if their event fit certain criteria, they could get funding to help them with whatever the event is, so that it might, you know, help close the business case for somebody who's inquiring.
That's a great suggestion. I would just put in a plug, that last year, one of the things that we funded with the community marketing campaign was a new website called Renton for Events.
Oh, good.
And it has every event venue in the community, as well as all the lodging properties in there, just additional visitor information, somebody planning a wedding, or family reunion, or a small conference could use.
Nice. Very nice.
Cliff? No, I'm looking at, what was Aloha Saturday?
Mr. President, that was an event this year that was done by the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and in conjunction with a number of business venues around the community. And what the monies went for-
I guess, when was it?
When? It was in August, I believe. And participating in that event were Wajamaya and Renton Village with Red Lion, McClendon's Hardware, The Landing, and then Vietwa. And there was a shuttle service between those. There was special food, and entertainment, and different events at each of the locations. There was a shuttle sponsored that took people around to each of the stops. They had a, kind of a passport, so to speak, and if somebody got their passport stamped at each of the events, they were eligible for a drawing. And Alaska Airlines donated a round trip to Hawaii, and Mayor Law drew the winning ticket for that. So, that was a fun, just an initial event from the chamber.
And then, so cruising the loop didn't happen this year?
Correct. And so, here's a good example of the way our process works with the city. This is a reimbursement program. So, $5,000 was approved to be used for marketing. Unfortunately, that event didn't take place. The only expenses they had were the design of a logo that they will use for next year's event, so that's the only thing that was reimbursed. The other monies just stay in the fund.
Okay.
I'd like to go to the last page of your, and I'll go offline to get more information.
Sure.
But, that sounds like a lot of money to one party, and I know, one of this is, I'm assuming, is where they put the little brochures in racks, and then they go all over, and my concern is, I have a lot in us, Washington, you know, a population of about 40, and we have a clubhouse, and tucked away in the back end is one of these racks with the pamphlets. And, yeah, we found a Renton, we accidentally, we've gone through them all, we found a Renton pamphlet in there, which, I mean, it was just a waste of marketing dollars. So, I really question that maybe we need to take a look at this last page really, really hard.
Absolutely. Councilmember Person, I think that's, you're right on, the world has definitely changed in terms of marketing and promotion. You'll be glad to know that this year, the Chamber of Commerce stopped their relationship with the brochure company, so they did not apply for funds this year. They don't intend to do that in the future. And obviously, I think folks are tending to look more to new media, the web, video, and social media as more effective advertising for the future.
Right. Can I?
Go ahead.
I guess I question too, and maybe you want to take a look at, is having a tourism office where people, if you're thinking people are going to stop in and say, oh, I'm in Renton, well, I think I'll go find the tourism office and get a brochure. You know, I'd really like the idea, the marketing more with the groups, trying to get them to come in here and stay in the hotels, and then help the hotels and the businesses get more business. So, that's just my personal opinion, and so, as we go down the line, you may want to keep that in mind.
Councilman Perez.
I will agree with Councilmember Person. I think times have changed, and also the use of internet and social media. People use more their mobile items to find things, more than going to visit a visitor's bureau, or a visitor's center. If they go to ask for questions, they approach more to the hotel people, to look for brochures and things, more than have to go outside and go to a visitor's center. I think because of the way now the media works. because of the way now, um, the media works, you know, have been, now been more futile than it used to be in the past. That's just my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I'll just make a comment, having shared this for a number of years, in that, um, I'm glad you guys like this because I think it is really gonna be helpful in the future and it will stop some of the emergency requests that, "Oh, we just had this great idea. Can we have $5,000 for it?" Because it takes more plan, planning to pull off something successful, um, and more thoughtful. We're required, we being the city, to report and so obviously, um, our stakeholders need to comply. And so that, I think overall, give a better picture of where the money's going and where it's best used. And I'll just use an example of the Aloha Saturday. Wajamaya has done, um, their own special Saturday for a number, I think since they opened down here.
Yeah.
And so this was just an attempt to kind of broaden it and get people to see more of, um, our city. And we had the shuttle. Well, there were some good lessons learned and how they do it, if they do it again, will be a little bit different, um, I think. And, and that's just the way it's gonna go whenever you try something new. Papa Piazza Events was new as well. But overall, I think, and I appreciate your comments about how times have changed and people don't just go look for brochures. They start with their device and, um, and you'll see in here that, that the electronic media is a big portion of the proposed money, um, that we're gonna spend rather than it being printed material as it has been in the past. But I just think overall, it's going to make for a much better, um, program system, campaign. And here we're gonna have, we're not gonna double our hotel rooms, but a significant number, what, by two-thirds?
Sixty percent, yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna have more money. And, um, throw your ideas in there for anything that you have. I think we've come a long way since I started when it was just kind of this mismatch of, what are we doing? So, thank you for all your help. I know you've really shepherded this through with the new state guidelines.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you to Marcy and the committee and Cliff and staff for... This, this is a very refreshing conversation we had tonight.
Yeah.
And, and I know it's a lot due to your leadership and working with staff to get this onto the council committee. So I really appreciate it. It's, this has really been very, very good. Thank you.
I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
It was beds and heads.
Yeah, in fact, um...
Beds and heads.
Mr. Chair?
Heads and beds.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
Yeah, so I, I mean, just for anybody that's listening, I mean, so, so, so this would make, you know, special events, right? So if somebody wanted to do a national specialty dog show, they, they could, they could, uh, inquire about renting one of our parks and maybe offset some of the costs with this program, right? If they could show that people were gonna be staying here. Or a golf tournament, um, they could, um, offset some of the rental fees of the golf course if they could show that people were staying nearby, right? So...
Exactly.
So I think to Marcy's point, people just need to, uh, just think outside the box a little bit and bring some of those events here.
Yep.
And go ahead and ask. You know, you don't get anything if you don't ask. And so, ask and if it's not fitting quite right, we'll help you.
Yeah.
Figure out.
So, yeah, soccer tournaments.
For the next time.
Lots of things, yeah.
Yeah.
So Cliff, did you have a general economic development update?
Uh, Mr. President, I do not this evening, but I'm happy to stand for any questions that council may have on, uh, open projects or, or anything that's, uh, that's going on.
I kind of know the answer to this and I think the council does, but I think just for the viewing public, a little bit of the status of getting the, the old glass place tore down and, and what's happening there because that's the most frequently asked question that I, that I get.
Great. Uh, yes, councilmember, uh, that, uh, site at the corner of Second and Main that was home to the Afghan restaurant and the former Pacific Glass, uh, site there, uh, that was damaged in a fire, um, is, uh, due to be remediated first part of next week. Uh, they've pulled the demolition permits and come and met with our construction engineering, uh, team and, uh, have put together a traffic control plan and that. And I think everything will start, uh, first part of next week. And it should take, Chip, huh?
Tomorrow.
Chip says it starts tomorrow. So, uh, there's updated news from what I have. So, um, it will start soon and I think it should take about a week. Is that right, Chip? About a week to complete, uh, clearing the site.
And we may just want to warn the motoring public that it isn't gonna be a pretty site for the first day or two because for safety reasons, they have to take a couple lanes of traffic on second. So, but we'll get through it.
Pain will be worth it.
And it'll be worth it.
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
All right, um, mid biennium budget. Ewan?
Yes. Thank you, council president, um, and council members. And for the record, I'm Ewan Wong, administrative services administrator for the city. And first of all, I just wanted to say I don't have a presentation tonight. And, um, we are actually, at this time, is on November 20, uh, November 2nd, and we're focusing on council deliberation and finalize, um, what council will recommend or decide to do. Before we go into the deliberation, I just want to, um, mention that I put a copy of budget-related legislation on your dais and, uh, with the cover of the draft committee report in there. And there's a couple of corrections in this committee report from what we present to you on October 12th. And the two, uh, correction is, um, there is one position should have been engineer specialist two and we labeled it as engineering specialist three in the, uh, October 12th presentation. And there's a, also an upgrade, position upgrade, um, mentioned, um, in the actual atta, budget attachments as a plan reviewer upgrade from A 23 to M 26, which should have been just a five percent out of a class pay while the additional duties are signed, um, continued. So tho, with those two exceptions, um, the rest of the budget attachment legislation are exactly the same as we, we drafted, um, and with the updated property tax information. And that is really what in front of you. And all these corrections are reflected in the legislation and committee report, um, in front of you. So with that, um, I will sit back and see if council has any questions on the proposed budget.
Any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Person?
We, we, I think we had a really good presentation before and we've had a chance to discuss it. And it's gonna surprise everybody in the room and everybody in the viewing audience, but I think this is a good budget and I don't have any questions.
I don't have any champagne, the puff.
Any other questions from any other council members?
No, I just want to congratulate Ewan. She did a great job.
Yeah.
I do want to mention one more thing. We did have a, uh, public hearing on October 26th and we did not receive any comments written or other communication.
Well, I, I have a committee report here that I'm not gonna read because it's long and I'll leave that, uh, Jason, later on tonight. Um, does anyone have any issues with me signing this committee report?
No. Nope.
All right. There aren't any additional questions for Ewan. We are adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.